Well, good evening, everyone. I now call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Natrona County Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, December 20th, 2022 to order. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Hendry.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Bertollio.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have a damn agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I don't have an agenda.
I, uh, sitting up here, hearing you all say that same time, that was, that was awesome. That was just awesome. Great way to start this night.
Yeah, true. Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hendry, second by Commissioner Milne, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to-
Commissioner North?
I'm going to accuse myself for this, from this, because there's a couple items on there that I'm directly involved with.
Okay. All right. That being said, all those in favor of the motion, see them by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to remove from the table the Natrona County zoning resolution rewrite?
So moved.
Second.
Should move by Commissioner Milne, second by Commissioner Nick Lason. All those in favor, see them by saying aye?
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries. I don't have my little script here, so I'm going to wing this. Do I have a script?
You can handle it.
Where'd you find that? Yeah, I don't know, Jenna. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the Natrona County zoning resolution rewrite. The hearing be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules, and the Natrona County Commission and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lectern and state your name and address for the record. Given that there are so many people in here, and I'm assuming that we're all here not to see Robin eyes last night, that we'd ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and if somebody's already brought your point up, to not be redundant. So with that, staff report?
Good evening.
You might have to pull out a little.
Can you hear that?
There, that's better.
Is that better? Mr. Chairman, the agenda tonight for this is to review again the process and timeline, the public comment overview, and the B O C C revision summary for the rewrite. For our general rewrite standards, we detailed how parcels of land can be used. That's along the lines of our 2016 comprehensive plan and supplemented with the county subdivision The goal for the zoning update was to modernize and simplify the language, reflected, to reflect the community's desires and best practices, to align with our 2016 county development plan, and to update and clarify definitions for ease of use, to make the right things easy, and to balance flexibility and certainty. Our mission statement from our comprehensive plan is that Natrona County is a unique place to live with the abundant natural, cultural, and historic resources, open spaces, and outdoor opportunities. We, as a community, cherish our values and quality of life. We understand that the economy of our county is changing, and we recognize that our existing economic foundations and the necessity to strengthen and diversify the county's economy. We wish to preserve and enhance our cultural and historic heritage and our community values while enhancing our quality of life through responsible growth. This process began back in December of 2020. It's gone through multiple steering committees and planning and Board of County Commissioners, and we are now two years down the line at December 2022. We've had three open houses. Out of those, we had 280 open house attendees, 15 community interviews, 219 questionnaire responses. There were 11 steering committee work sessions, 130 public comments on the draft, and 2,115 views of the draft. We've had actually four county commissioner work sessions. Public comments, 30 public comments on the revised draft have come through with 325 views of the online draft. The B O C C held work sessions to review on November 29th, the 30th, the 6th, and the So what is left is the final formatting of the document.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Turner? I'm sure we'll have you come up and do some clarifications as we go along, so. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the zoning rewrite to approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? All right. There being no one to speak in favor, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the zoning rewrite to approach the lectern. Yes? And Jim is keeping time, so.
Rose Merring Zabon, 9460 West Zero Road. There's very little reason to waste anyone's time on what I have to say tonight without a question and response from the public audience. How many people here feel that this is entirely too complex with the language being such that it's both confusing and discouraging in its entirety?
Show of hands.
I feel that it warrants reminding the commission that with power comes great responsibility, the likes of which not everyone is inept to manage. An obligation is owed to the citizens to be transparent. We, the people's health, safety, morals, and general welfare is to remain intact and preserved by our elected leadership. I can't emphasize this point enough. For the citizens of this county provide for your very existence, a foundation upon which to build and sustain structural stability against outside detriments. This document reads like an OSHA standard and is only potentially comprehensible by an attorney. The public should not be required to seek legal counsel in knowing and understanding their own basic property rights. A sense of redundancy combined with a lack of sensible flow throughout only amplifies the frustration and confusion. One example of a multitude of these contained throughout Page 96, family childcare center or home, owner occupancy, home or business owner must be the primary resident, rather than breaking it into two separate sections when essentially it's the same requirements without the extensive confusion associated with all the breakdown micromanaging. Why do we really need zoning in rural areas of the county? Mr. Bertollio's statement at the December 6 meeting was that we'd be just asking for trouble without it. Because Natrona County is a very large metropolitan area. So is it the belief of the commissioners that people are incapable of governing themselves since you wish to adopt this resolution? Cheyenne is a much larger metropolitan area with the front range of Colorado influence, and Laramie County only has partial zoning. Zoning provisions should be limited to those which only impose a financial burden on the citizens. Examples would include the 235,000 Paige Logan Simpson building in floodplains where groundwater or water wells can be contaminated, on unstable ground, irrigated land, prime range lands for grazing, dense or heavy weighted traffic on roads not designed to handle restrictions or weight, et cetera. That is an issue on poison spider and zero roads. What has been produced here does not serve the interests of the public in those matters of health, safety, morals, and general welfare, when again nearly every aspect of our lives is to be permitted or penalized, burdening us without legitimized costs. Such is the unequivocal fact with permits, as I previously discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, you're, I started to interrupt.
She can have my three minutes. Continue.
Most of us do not want this much zoning in the unincorporated areas of the county or this overbearing overreach you want to adopt to gain control. As Mr. Nick Lason stated in the last meeting, he knows some people who want even more zoning than what's being currently proposed. That's typical gaslighting. The roughly 20,000 people in the unincorporated area of Natrona County don't care what the city of Casper or the surrounding towns and municipalities want for our private properties. As we stated about a property tax petition that only one of our commissioners refused to sign, we don't like the language. We'd rather stay on the outside and not be involved. Is that okay? There are HOAs and subdivisions with covenances for those people wishing to live out of town in a controlled manner. I will reiterate that most of us have been stating our needs of limited zoning and that we want our constitution upheld, that which grants us our rights and liberties over our dominion, that which you have been sworn to uphold. The community vision and county vision are two separate consights that cannot be conglomerated into one world order with the agenda you're pushing. The current document from 2000 was referred to as a more comprehensive land use plan. This should be named a more compulsory manifesto. It still very strongly suggests that it serves only two purposes, to generate yet another revenue stream and to benefit developers in generating revenue, so one purpose in fact. The overreach contained in this will undoubtedly create new Hitlers, those who will exercise authority in what you have created by removing personal accountability and common sense. It matters not if you hear topics and opinions repeated here tonight. We have repeatedly expressed our concerns about this for several months, and you have not made substantial changes in minimizing, simplifying, or eliminating what would be necessary to justify the time and money spent. Since it was our money, in fact, with no question regarding what we wanted, the current plan changed, or zoning for that matter. We demand that this be tabled. I made calls to zoning and planning in our neighboring counties, and I would strongly suggest that you consult with them as well to avoid making, shall we say, uninformed decisions. This draft was viewed outside of Natrona County, and the language was said to be ambiguous, and it would behoove you to understand this document in its entirety before its approval. It will impact the future, changing Wyoming values forever. Table this. We're not asking you.
And I, that's the last one, it's going to go past three minutes, and we're not going to have people stand up here and say, Judy, 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 you can leave now if you're, we're not here to discuss this. Judy?
That's wrong. You're wrong.
I, it's the prerogative of the chair, so. The next person, please. Next person, please, Judy. Thank you, sir.
Dave Burnett, County Road 205 in Natrona County. I want to thank everybody for coming. The last meeting, the commission characterized his latest version of this document as a good document. I would ask for who or what. It's not good for the people. It attempts to define or redefine just about everything. Through word art, legalese, and what I would characterize as confusing at best, if not clearly intentional deceptive construction, it attempts to move vested and granted property rights to permitted fee-paying and taxed activities. It clearly tells the people what and when they shall and will do, but gives the agencies and bureaucrats an option of what they may do, as if the people do not have enough sense or intelligence to make good decisions about their own private property. Only an agency or a bureaucrat could possibly make that property decision. It appears that this document wants to move the people's avenue for redress and relief into the judicial system. Again, the judicial system is not the people's friend. Governments' unlimited budgets compared to the average person's budgets makes this a near impossible avenue to travel. If it is, if it is the intent to make this, to make the average person just give up and concede, get whatever permit you deem necessary, pay whatever fee that you think is appropriate, and continue to seek your permission to use their own private property for whatever reason, this will accomplish that. If the reason for this document is nobody is following the current rules, and the commission's answer is let's make more restrictive rules, ask yourself, what could possibly go wrong? In closing, given the scope of this document, one public hearing on the final draft, and the significant change to the makeup of the, of the commission in the next couple of weeks, I would ask, or maybe a more appropriate term would be respectfully demand that the commission table the decision for final adoption until the new commissioners take office and the people have ample opportunity to voice their concerns and opinions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, if you want to line up, or?
No, we'll sit.
Okay, next.
And you're incorrect. That is part of every single meeting I have ever seen in my life in this town, is that if someone goes beyond the three minutes, we've let Tracy Lamont go on for 15 minutes and not said a word about it. And as you can see, the audience wants us to speak, so they're obviously sitting back there, willing to give me their three minutes. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, if one person wants to come up here and speak for the entire group, that's great. But if everybody comes up here and has 15 or 20 minutes-
They wouldn't do that.
We're going to be here till the snowstorm hits tomorrow.
They wouldn't do that. Anyway, yeah, no shit. After going through the latest version of how many ways you can take absolute control of our enjoyment and use of our private property rights, and charge us more money for things we would or could or want to do on them, so let's see what this is really behind. United Nations Agenda 21 is a non-binding action plan to sustainable development which has started to be implemented worldwide to inventory and control all land, all water, all minerals, all plants, and much more, including the control of all human beings in this world. What do HUD, EPA, DOT have in common besides being federal agencies? The Summit Foundation, the Sir Diana Foundation, the Turner Foundation, the US Department, the Environmental Protection Agency, the US Green Building Council, that's just to name a few. On, next, let's move on. I've been trying to get a copy of the nine different changes you guys have done, and I tried on, let's see, we had the last meeting on the 6th. I sent Rose down here to pick up one on the 8th. Got the same excuse that I've gotten from her four fucking times already. Pardon me.
Please watch your language.
Pardon me. The printer is down. I can't print copies. Nobody else, like, there's not another printer in this building that can print, okay? I don't know why you guys didn't have a box full of them, sitting out there for people to get. Because I've spent over $200 printing this stuff up, just so these people know what they're, what they're signing on to. I tried again on the, on the 12th. I tried on the 14th. I tried on the 16th. And I guess today you guys made another change, because I went back to the website and planning had pulled it down altogether. So I had to pull up what you had on your Board of County Commissioners one, just because I wanted to check it. All right, let's move on. The American Planners Association, I'd like to know if you guys are involved in that and all. Let's, do I have to remind the commission that the 7th District Court, the judge ruled four important things for me that land use plan tries to dismantle? A neighbor's rights and noses ends at my property line. Antique vehicles are no longer listed as a collector item in this plan, but is in fact in the state statute under 31-13-105(c). Limitations on possession, presumption of abandonment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. No person, no more than four. And then you get to the good part. Vehicles used as educational or instructional purposes. And then you go back to 31-13-105. Vehicles 25 years or older and held solely as collector items is in fact okay to have. You seem to think by redoing, changing the verbiage in this plan, you can take away mine and anybody else's rights by a simple ordinance. I'm saying you guys need to table this. I have never seen a bigger mess ever made. And you might be a nice gal, Christie, but you're in over your head, sweetheart. And last, the last planning and zoning meeting, Donna Martenson, Real Estate, Melissa Van Horn, Rose Zabon, Bob Eyde, Kathy Eyde, Thomas Lovelace, Mike Corrigan, William Lubin, that was just a few that spoke against us. If this doesn't tell you we don't want it, and you guys pass this, you can be sure we're going to do something about it, okay? I'm done.
Thank you.
Harvey Anis, and I'll give you my card so that you-
Oh, if you want to give it over there, sir. Thank you.
I'm going to give constructive notice. Now, I didn't get notice for this-
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Until two days ago.
Excuse me, sir, just for a second.
Okay.
Just, just for a second. I appreciate that you gave your card to the clerk, but if you'd tell us your address, that's helpful.
Harvey Anis, 1755 Alcoa Route.
Thank you.
And she's, she's got all the giddy there. I'm giving you constructive notice that what is happening here is unconstitutional. It is unconstitutional. We run for over 200 years in this country without a dictatorship. We don't need it now. Understand what I'm saying? And that's exactly what this is. This didn't come from the people. Here's the people, and they're not very happy with it. And I'll guarantee I'm not happy with it, and I'm not sitting down, because this thing is going to court in a different county because the judges in this county don't want somebody to come after them. There's a whole bunch of issues here, and it's when you get into lighting, it's poor, I can't even see my writing here. Whenever, what you're doing is an act of war. Don't say it isn't, because every president for the last 50 years had had a war on crime, a war on poverty, a war on drugs, and it wasn't a shooting war, and it was a war, and it was valid, and it was, it was quote lawful. I wouldn't say it lawful, I'd say it illegal, because lawful or has to be law behind it. A legality is something that they throw out, and they don't get it thrown back in their face. I intend to bring these you people to court because you come out of the woodwork. You didn't come from here. We didn't demand zoning. Every problem that's come up, you can take it to court and have it adjudicated right now. Like I told them 40 years ago, one of the zoners, I said, well, oh, I had a house right above yours, and I didn't hook up to the sewer, and my sewage ran right across the fence and under, into your yard. You know what he said? I sue you. You know what I told him? And you wouldn't need a zoning law to do it with either, would you? No, this is a transfer of government from a constitutional republic to a communist dictatorship. You hear what I'm saying? I know what you people are. You can hide behind a lot of fancy titles, but you're not fooling old Harv, not one minute. I fought this thing for many, many years. I put my life on the line many times. I've got a whole list of things, and I can't read them because life is no good in here, because an act of war is whenever you come against life and property. Article 1, Section 7, Wyoming State Constitution, absolute, quote, "absolute arbitrary power" over the lives, liberty, and property of free men exists nowhere in a republic, not even in the largest majority." You understand what I'm saying? And this crap that you're putting out is in violation of that. It is in violation of it. It's wrong. We've got all the law we need to cover any problem that I do to somebody else or you do to me. We don't need somebody coming out and telling us how to live our life. If we disturb somebody else's property or life, then we have recourse in the court. I've been to court before on both sides, against me and against them.
Thank you, sir. Could you wrap it up?
Oh, yeah, I will. I've, I've got a lot of, and I've got it all wrote out here. We're going to have a meeting, the people's going to have a meeting, and then we'll probably bring you people into court, because this is not constitutional republican government. I'll put a notice in, in Wyoming Lock Stop Roundup, and we'll have another meeting of the people, and then we'll start proceeding, because this doesn't fly. You people feel pretty damn cocky, but we didn't elect you. Not one of you did we elect.
All right, thank you.
My name is Cheyenne Houston. Address is 4340 Hideaway Lane. I'm going to be short and sweet. This 239 pages that you're proposing is going to do nothing but make criminals out of honest, law-abiding citizens who want nothing more than to enjoy the, the property that they have worked their whole lives to have. Thank you.
Represent the Casper Board of Realtors. First of all, we'd just like to say is thank you to the Board of County Commissioners, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the staff for the dedication to try and move Natrona County forward in the coming years. With that being said, the document, the resolution document that has just come out as of the, I believe it was the 9th of December, is a, is a complex document, and trying to compare the current document to the other document takes quite a bit of time to, to see how it is. And I know that a lot of times, there's been some discussion about that, it's clarification and that, but it takes time to go through that. So we are asking from the Casper Board of Realtors is for you to just consider giving the public additional time to review this document so that there can be meaningful comments made back to you to make sure we get this document right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're doing a, going through the same thing we did several years back. I know what this is all about. It's about money and power. You guys are enjoying the power, and the money part of it is, the gentleman that was just, just up here, he said it, and if you can kind of read between the lines, he's a realtor. And so the people, the poor people that are out in the country, they're trying to live a life, a dream life, and they don't have the money that you folks have. And so they have to live meagerly. They might have to have a pile of wood, a tin, tubefors and stuff, to build a, a little corral for their kid's 4-H project. So, yeah, a pile of wood doesn't look very good, but the realtors want everything cleaned up so that property value will go up. I understand that. But my case is the- But my case is the county, when they went and did a restructure of the taxes codes, my property taxes went up seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent, not five percent, not six percent. I went to Matt Key, and I says, this is not right. So we did a review on it, and he lowered it down. He sent a little lady out there to do a valuation, and got it down to seventeen percent. Seventeen percent is still a high number to your taxes to jump in one year. That's a big number. I agreed to that. Times change. However, I asked him, why is this happening? And he says, it's because of the neighborhood. Your neighbors, that housing development, their property brings up my property value. Wrong. My whole property is an alkali pit. You can't build on it. I had to dig seventeen holes, open them up for the county, so they could see where the water table was. I had to turn around and buy more property so I could find a place to build a home. So tell me that property is the same as the property in the housing development. It's not. Not even close. Not even close. I bought there because I don't have the money that you guys have to buy good property. And people with the money that they're trying to run, the poor people, out of their property there where they got trailer houses and a pile of wood and a fence over here to hold their chickens in, and that sort of thing, it's different. If they had the kind of money that you folks have, they'd be living in a higher-priced locale anyhow. You know, I don't know, I haven't had an opportunity to read every little fine point of it, to compare it, but if you've got enough money to hire an outside firm to come in and evaluate what's going on, you also should have enough money to make a flyer and send it out to all of us, and let us know what's going on and exactly what's in that, so that we can understand it and know. I think this ought to be tabled till we can all understand and figure out what the hell's going on.
All right, thank you.
My name's Terry Winggerter, fourteen twenty-seven Horn Church, Casper. And Commissioners, I really think you ought to table this, not only because you have two new, several new Commissioners coming in, but you just lost your county attorney soon, who's moving over to the city, and the county attorney is, as you well know, of course, is in charge of the planning department. And you should wait for the new county attorney, in my opinion, whoever she or he will be, and give them a chance to go over this new, this land use plan. And I know you've had many meetings, I've been sitting out in the audience for several of them, and I just think it'd be wise, a couple of you Commissioners are leaving, and you're gonna walk out of here tonight, and you're just gonna forget about it, because you voted, and you say, well, I did my part. But the people would rather hearing them tonight, they would rather you just table this. That's what I would do if I was sitting in your place.
Thanks.
So, anyway, that's my opinion, for what it's worth.
I live on Eight Mile Road, and I've got a letter, but it's gonna be read by epoxy, because I've been getting shots in my eyes, and they don't cooperate. But anyway, this is two pages out of your Wyoming Commissioners Handbook, okay? It pretty well delineates how this proceeding should have transpired, but it did not, okay? And here's, I have the one question I have. How come we have not seen a copy of your final draft? What happened to it? Wasn't the final one?
There's one posted online right now.
When was it posted?
It was posted as twelve nine, and we made some very small changes today based on some comments we received yesterday, and they are non-substantive relative to what was in the draft.
Not only can I see, I don't mess with computers. This is your handbook, official. This is two pages from it. Ruth will read it.
The Administrative Procedure Act requires that specific procedural requirements must be followed by all agencies. Recent judicial decisions on the APA have focused on the record available for judicial review. If someone appeals a case before a Board of County Commissioners, the courts want an adequate record so they can review what actions are taken. They want to know what the issues were, whether the procedural aspects were followed, and what basis the Commissioners used to make a decision. If the court, from reviewing the transcripts of the hearing, the evidence and the documents determines that there was basis for the decision, they normally affirm the decision. However, the court will not affirm a decision if it cannot determine the basis for the decision. The decision still must be in accordance with law and cannot be arbitrary or capricious. If the county does not follow its own procedural rules, or it doesn't explain what evidence it used to arrive at its decision, the court will send it back for further review and further development of the record, or will make their own decision with regard to evidence presenting, presented at the hearing. There are three requirements in this act. First, each county agency must adopt rules of practice setting forth the nature and requirements of all formal and informal procedures available in connection with contested cases. Second, they must make available for public inspection all rules and all other written statements of policy or interpretations formulated, adopted, or used by the agency in the discharge of its function. And third, they must make available for public inspection all final orders, decisions, and opinions. The first part of the act, contested cases, is used primarily for property assessments and for planning and zoning actions in the county. Describes a contested case, a proceeding including, but not restricted to rate-making, price-fixing, and licensing, in which legal rights duties or privileges of a party are required by law to be determined by an agency after the opportunity of a hearing. All parties must have an opportunity of a hearing after reasonable notice has been served, either personally or by mail.
Ma'am, can I interrupt you real quick and ask a quick question? Is this resolution subject to administrative review process, or, because it's not a hearing or a case?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so the Administrative Procedures Act has two distinct parts. One deals with quasi-judicial determinations through a contested case hearing, which I believe this lady is reading from. The second is the provisions of the Administrative Procedures Act, which deal with rulemaking, and those would be applicable.
Okay. I just, I was, I wasn't sure whether we were on the same...
We're on the same page. In all contested cases, agencies have the authority to administer all subpoena witnesses and require the protection of any books, papers, and other documents relevant to the inquiry. Opportunity must be afforded to all parties to respond and present evidence and argument in all issues involved. In any contested case, the agency or the person designated is presiding, designated as presiding officer must be precedent of all procedures. All final decisions and orders adverse to a party in the contested case must be in writing or dictated to, into the record. Written decisions must be separately stated, findings of fact, and conclusions of law. Any person adversely affected by a decision of an agency is entitled to the judicial review in the district court of the county, provided administrative remedies have been exhausted, and there's no statutory or common law provision limiting judicial review. Once appealed to the district court, the aggrieved party may appeal to the Supreme Court. The second part of the act, making available for public inspection all rules and other written statements of policy used by the agency, is used more generally. A rule means...
Ma'am, can I interrupt you one more time? We can go back and read this. I'm just gonna ask our...
Well, basically, it says you've got forty, you have to give us forty-five days, and you gave us six.
Let me clarify, let me ask our city attorney, and we've been very clear about the procedure. County attorney, county attorney, I've already got it written.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is not a contested case hearing, so much of what she read is not applicable. However, she is correct, there needs to be forty-five days' notice given, and there was. In fact, there was...
For the final reading?
It's not for the final... Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have to, it was forty-five days' notice was given that this would be taken up at the last meeting. It was tabled at that meeting in an open meeting. Prior to that, prior to the planning and zoning, there was thirty days' notice given pursuant to Wyoming State statute. So I have reviewed the record. I believe we have complied with all necessary legal notification requirements, and beyond that, I think we've gone above and beyond. We've sent out specific mailings, and as Ms. Turner presented early on, this has been going on for two years with multiple open houses. So I believe that we are legally compliant.
Well, you're alone in that thought.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Well, I disagree because...
So noted.
Because what we, we've never even seen the final draft of what you want to do.
It's not available.
Ms. Jones, it's available. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Good evening, Senator-elect Ied. Oh, excuse me. I got a, I got a city attorney over here.
You changed all that a couple of weeks ago, actually. Thank you, Chairman Bertollio, members of the board. My name is Bob Ied, thirty-eight thirty-eight Garden Creek Road. I don't want to be redundant. Everybody said it real well tonight. I wish I had a Harvey Anis's speech. It was pretty good. I was recently elected to the state legislature, and I ran on a platform of more freedom and less government. And this zoning debacle is the complete opposite. It's more government and less freedom. And I don't know what we're missing here tonight. There wasn't one person here that spoke in favor of this, and I just don't understand why we're even considering it. I mean, people are talking about tabling it. I think it should be scrapped, and I think the twenty-twenty-one should be scrapped as well. We can govern ourselves. We don't need the government to take care of us out there. The people are speaking tonight. I'm representing them too. A lot of these people are in my district as well, not that I carve it out to that, but I've gotten a lot of calls on this issue as well, not just for my own personal reasons, but from other constituents, and we need to do, we need to get rid of this. I don't think anybody, there wasn't one person here tonight to speak in favor of this at all. There wasn't one. We've got six counties in this state that have no zoning laws at all. You know, I think it's Johnson, Converse, Crook, Goshen, Weston, Wasachee, might be another one in there, but I think we need to go that path. We need to go backwards. We need to get less government in our, in our community, here in our county. And I appreciate what you guys do. Congratulations on your last night, I guess. Sorry, that's what it is, but that's, thank you for your service, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Scott Clamp, seven-twenty Wasatch in Mills. Sometimes if you listen, material presents itself. And I heard somebody talking about real estate and stuff, and my family's been doing Union Mason for over a hundred years in Wyoming. And I want to know when people's gonna start being responsible for letting people build in areas. I mean, years ago, they quit developing Sagewood because the problem it had for the city, and then a new developer comes in and decides to put more property and more houses in there, and it's allowed. The East Gate End, I worked on a lot of homes there, and they invented real estate, is what they did, because when we was kids, we, kids, we used to hunt all them little fingers. So what they did is they brought earth in there and filled up all that stuff, and made lots for these people to build on, and you got million, two-million-dollar homes that are sinking up there. So I want, and some of this stuff out there on the spider where it's alkali, anybody that knows anything about alkali, because I've been in cement and masonry all my life, if I bury stuff in cement, my cement and alkali, after a period of time, it rots away and goes to hell. And so we need to be careful of where we're letting these people build, and if you're gonna allow them to build in this area, it shouldn't just be the builder that's responsible for the damage. It should be the people that allowed it, whether it's the county, the city, or whoever. You need to investigate that stuff, because our cars ain't destroying land. It's what you do to the land with the developing and all of that. Wyoming's big, we can spread out, and if we had spread out, then our neighbors' stuff wouldn't bug us so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Ford. I live out in Gold Creek, one-two-three-three-one Gary Dome Road. And again, I'm not good at talking at this place, but as I listen to all of this, I just wished you guys would pay attention to us, because we're the ones that have been paying for all this stuff. I've been here for several years, sixty years, something like that, and I come from other places. I love Wyoming, but I see Wyoming disappearing, and it looks like returning into a park city. And Park City was beautiful farm country. They moved everybody out, and all the big dogs came in, and that's what I feel like's happening here. We got Starr here with all this big money, and it's like, I'm not rich, and I have a hard time making it. When my husband passed away, you know, it's hard on your own. I don't know how much longer I can go. My sister come out here, she's helping me the best she can, and I got a hundred-and-twenty acres out there, a little more, but that's close enough. And I like it, because I don't want to be moved in on. I don't want to have a lot of people around. I try to keep my place up the best I can. I mow around my house. I mow everywhere. I mow the field, I mow, you know, I do a lot of work, but it's getting tougher and harder. And you guys keep raising all this money. Like I said last time, your permits are just killing me, just on my furnace, just to have my furnace put in. That still was a lot of money for permits. It cost me at least four-hundred dollars for permits, to put a furnace from electric to propane. That's all I was doing. And just, I mean, I was shocked at the price when I got that ticket, and then when I got all the other bills and I got it all together, it cost me a mint just to have a furnace put in. Anyway, I just wished you would really reconsider and take your time. We aren't rich, and we, we're just trying to make it in Wyoming. We love Wyoming. We're proud of Wyoming, and we wanted to stay Wyoming. We don't want a bunch of city folks coming in here telling us, oh, oh, you know, we need to get better around here, you know, we need to bring in more stuff.
All right, thank you.
Because I, oh, I also, I tried to find this stuff, and I couldn't find it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
My name is Brendan Eberhard. I reside at 20750 West Poison Spider Road. I mean, a lot of stuff has been said, and I, I understand some of the complexities of the website. I've also been trying to send emails with comments, and I keep getting returned, the emails returned, dangerous stuff that I keep saying bounce back. And so, I don't have time to bring everything up, all the changes I would recommend. The thing I want to say is, back in the nineties and even in the early two thousands, my grandfather saw the changes that were going on, insisted I go to school. I'm a fourth-generation rancher here. And even the town of Mills was named after an ancestor. And they insisted I go to school, which I did. Ended up spending ten years to get a degree in architecture and city regional planning, in which time I also served and helped write zoning laws in towns like Delano, California, Rancho Mirage, California, and doing work in San Luis Obispo, California as well. This zoning is very confusing. Persons could take what's said there and twist it. You can make it work for you or against you. So, it just really brings it up to enforcing court matters and just kind of creating a mess. And so, I mean, I've heard a lot of talk about tabling, and it's kind of interesting that you did do a rewrite, so now I know I'm going to use the old one to help start my fire for this cold spell we're just about to hit. But I just, in all this zoning that I did work for during those ten years, this is really by far the most confusing and elaborate, which amazes me, because all those cities in California that I talked about, it was, they're bigger than anything we got here. I mean, this was dealing with populations of over a hundred thousand. And it's just, I just want to say that this is a very confusing, very complex plan. I appreciate the work that went into it, having had to work on these plans with teams of people, but for our little area, and I just say, the past few commissioner meetings that I've been to, I keep hearing this hurrah for people still keeping farmland, trying to preserve farmland and ranchland. This plan is going to kill that. It's going to force it out. This is what my grandfather was fearing, what happened here, why he wanted me to go to school to find a different degree, to find a different path than ranching. I didn't listen, I mean, I got the degree, but I decided to still do it. So, it's what I love. But, so I just caution against creating something that's going to destroy what made Wyoming Wyoming.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Kathy Ied. I live at 3838 Garden Creek Road, and thank you for letting me speak. I'd just like to be really brief. One of the things I think the problem that we're having is that we're, we're trying to fix something like the original or the two, I think it's the 2000 that we're working on. That's like putting lipstick on a pig. What we're trying to do now, we're trying to fix a product that was already flawed. And so, what I would really urge and ask anybody here tonight that would want to, you know, work together and possibly present this to you, but as Bob mentioned, there's six counties that do not have zoning in Wyoming. And one of them, Converse County, the, you know, statute requires that we have a land use plan at least. And as I'm looking at Converse County's land use plan, it's only thirty-four pages. Just imagine, just, I mean, the reason most people are living in the county is they just want to be left alone. They want freedom. They, they don't like that heavy hand of government. And so, if we could redo, go from a two-hundred-and-fifty-page document of regulations down to a thirty-four-page document, I can't see how anybody would, that lives in the county, they would, I would, I would assume that they would love that. So, if you would, you know, down the road, if you would allow us, some of us to get together to work on a land, a simple land use plan, and we could implement that and get rid of all this complicated over regulatory zoning that you're addressing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dana Jones, 335 North Eight Mile Road, west of Casper. And I would like to ask a question about collector motor vehicles. If you go to the new draft of your resolution, on page, I believe it was 210, there's a statement in there that says that any, any inanimate object can be a collector's item except motor vehicles. Where are you guys headed with that?
Ms. Turner.
That doesn't seem to be a good statement to me. It's kind of ignorant. You take Jay Leno, these kind of people that do collect cars, those are collector motor vehicles. Why does this new draft say that they are not? Where are you headed with it?
I think we're, we essentially did nothing to the existing vehicle as it was amended through your process, so I think Ms. Turner could probably-
Okay. Yeah, and there are some mixed signals included with that that I'd like to address when we get to it.
So, we have vehicles defined as the unregistered and operable vehicle storage is how we have addressed those issues. Within that, we have RAM, urban ag, light industrial that's a non-residential use, high industrial as allowing six. After that, we are asking that they be screened across the board on all of the other zones, including light industrial that is residential. You have one unregistered and operable vehicle. After that, the rest of them can be screened.
Yeah, we did not address collector motor vehicles. There is a difference.
So, in our definition of vehicles that we went over today, we exempted antiques. We exempted the sports cars.
We exempted antiques, pedestrian vehicles, off-road recreational vehicles, street rod, and custom vehicles. And mopeds. Oh, or a moped.
And there are state, state laws that do define what that is, and you have that in the resolution.
Yes.
Also, it says that you will deal with antique collector cars under the nuisance laws. Therefore, it makes the zoning resolution easier to deal with and clarify, and the ease of enforcement on these vehicles. What do you mean by that?
I-
So, are all antique cars a nuisance?
No. The, I'll let County Attorney Nelson address why we nuisance in zoning or two.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so nuisance under Wyoming statute exists or is defined, the process is defined separately in statute. And so, we're bifurcating that. So, I think we're very cognizant of the statutory provisions allowing antique collector cars, and I think that's what the zoning draft attempts to address. It's my interpretation that these documents do not say that an antique collector car is per se a nuisance. If there was to be any enforcement, it would have to meet nuisance criteria, which is a separate and distinct definition under statute. And I've looked at Ms. Turner and make sure that I'm explaining it fully.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think there's some confusion out there, too, that, that anything that's on the ground now that exists out there by somebody's house, or their house, or their property, isn't that grandfathered in? It's from now on that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
That's a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so that covers that on the nuisance. And then, you go into the state law that basically says you can have four unlicensed vehicles on your property, and it actually defines what an antique car is. It's twenty-five years or older, and it's kept solely by the owner for collector's items. So, I can't see why you can't get rid of that statement in there that's ignorant, that excludes motor vehicles as being collector's items. Makes no sense. Mixed signals. And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, Dallas Laird. Office is four blocks from here on Center Street. I just have a question mainly for your county attorney. I like to keep people out of litigation. I don't necessarily like being, getting them involved in litigation, so I'm thinking of the county now, because I'll be a commissioner in a few days. I'm looking at some things that seem to say that that forty-five-day appeal time runs from the last action on this document, and there were changes made today. So, there, conceivably, the forty-five days doesn't start running till you're absolutely done making amendments to that. Now, would I swear to that under oath? No, I would want it researched. But what I would like, what I would want is the county attorney to give me a memo, because these appeal times, boy, they're tricky. People get in a lot of trouble with these down at the Supreme Court and in District Court. I've dealt with these kind of deadlines my whole life, and if you file something too soon or too late, you're dead. So, there's, there's some question in my mind that, that with the amendments made today, obviously, if you look at it in the short term, these folks didn't have time to object to the amendments you made today.
Exactly.
And so, I think that could, gentlemen, affect the entire document. But I'm only saying I would like you to be really careful with this, because there's people out here that have litigation in their eyes, and they're on fire with it, and I'd like to, and I know you don't want to see the county in an expensive lawsuit either, especially now, but I'd really like to make sure on that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was some change in the changes, just about that forty-five days.
Jeanette Ward, 1600 East 26th Street, Casper. I'm also the representative-elect in District 57. I agree with most of the previous comments tonight, but especially with Bob and Kathy Ied. My question is, who will enforce these new regulations, and how much additional staff and funds will these regulations require to enforce? I see within this document things like references to the Code of Federal Regulations, the Federal Emergency Management Act, the number of parking spaces that adult entertainment establishments must have, and the number of days campers can be parked on private property. Most Wyomingites rightfully bristle against references to federal control. When regulations increase, freedom decreases. Please don't do this.
Thank you.
Can I have three minutes?
No.
One more time, guys, just this little portion here that I thought was pretty interesting. I watched in dismay, the planning and zoning, did a meeting on the thirteenth, and I'm not saying anything about these people as being bad or good, but they applied for a conditional use permit for a crushing facility on between where the water tanks are on Zero Road and where the Pepsi plant is, right in between those two. One's a business, one's a house. The road is nineteen feet wide there. I measured it myself. And I also measured Zero Road. It's thirty-three feet wide if you don't go fence line to fence line. We drive diesels. I drive them, I know. And getting in and out of somewhere like that, for one thing, is stopping traffic coming and going. Secondly, Zero Road is not built to have a big semi with twelve crushed cars on the trailer coming out of somewhere like that. And then, what's going to happen when the glass falls off? Part of the tail lenses like fall off into the street. It's going to be a perpetual flat tire to us. You know, and, and the point I'm making on this is, eight years ago, you guys hated what we were doing. You know, you accused me of doing everything under the sun of dismantling and selling parts and all of this good stuff. And here, they're gonna, they're, they're going to get a permit in the middle of a, of a residential area. That big lady, the lady across the street's got that vegetable stand. So, now she's got to go out in the street and clean up headlight rings? You know, and you guys will be dealing with this on the third, and you need to make sure that they follow the EPA law, okay? Antifreeze, oil, battery acid. I didn't hear any of them talk about a mitigation plan on any of that. But had it been me, you could bet I'd have had to jump through fifty hoops. Thank you.
She wants EPA.
Good evening.
Hi, Andrea Boyer, 2116 Omaha Trail in Vernon. Good evening, Chairman and Board. I just had a concern. As I had been reading through, I ended up getting through about a hundred and fifty pages of this. And one of my concerns I had, just in regards of language, I realize that language is a really tricky thing to bring up, because we are in a litigious society. I understand that we have to be really careful with how we word things for that reason, for legal reasons. But I am a little concerned about some of the language being unclear, particularly with home-based business. As a small business owner, of course, this is something that is very personal to me. I really want to be sure that people will be able to continue to have their own businesses, you know, and, and not, not get pushed out of that, especially since we're in a stressed economy, and people should be able to have every opportunity available to provide for their families. So, that is the concern I wanted to bring, is just the language of that. Like, I have like on page twenty-two where it is mentioned as well as, hold on, I'm trying to find it here. I think it's 138. Anyway, so just, just as a reference, as you can see some of the things that I'm seeing. Anyway, I, and I also want to thank you, too, for all the time that you've put into this. I know that this is quite an endeavor, and I appreciate it. So, thank you for your time.
So, so what exactly are, is, is your concerns on, on that page? Because there's-
On, like on 22?
Well, I, on, on 137, because we-
Let's see. Like on 22, I know, like, you guys are working on changing, it's 2.05.07, if I'm saying that correctly. Urban residential A intent. The intent and purpose of the UR District is to establish and protect a medium to high-density residential neighborhood. And then, you've crossed out no business usage is allowed, but then have changed it to the district shall be free from other uses except those which are compatible with this purpose. And I, I don't even know what that means, reading it. Like, does this mean that people can't have home-based businesses in this zoning, or what does that mean?
No, it means that you cannot stick a mini mart in the middle of it, or something along that nature. A home-based business is, is still permissible in that.
Okay. And then, thank you for clarifying that. And then, in, on page 138, talking about onsite sales, and I was having a hard time understanding this as well, because- And I was having a hard time understanding this as well, because this is talking about home occupation. It starts on, actually, 137. And it's talking about onsite sales. There shall be no products sold on the premises except artist's originals.
That has been struck.
Oh, that has? Okay. So...
Yeah, did we, we struck that? Is that correct?
We struck that today.
Yeah, that, if, I know not, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that up. Not everybody here attended the work session, but that paragraph on onsite sales was deleted in its entirety. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you so much for that clarification. And thanks again for your time. I really appreciate it.
Yes.
Hello, gentlemen. Steven Hanson, 4340 Hightower Lane. Listening to everything that's gone on just this evening, I'm going to request, I really request you guys to put this off another 45 days for review from the changes that were just met today. I would like to see you guys, I'd like to see it thrown out, the whole thing. But I would at least ask you to please table this until we get a new attorney. Mr. Nelson goes on, and let's get a new county attorney in there. Let's get the other board members seated. Let's take a fresh look at this. There's changes made today. There's a lot of disgruntled folks. I would please request that you table this until these guys get underneath them, and then we'll talk to them. The changes that you've made today, it's not going to set well. It's just not going to look right, and that's not who we are. Please, let's table this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Tim Kaleby, South Eight Mile Road. Has been reiterating several times, we need to keep this simple. We need to get rid of a lot of the stuff that we don't need. Most of these people that live out of town have moved out of town because they don't like the city regulations. If somebody wants to live in a manicured lawn, there's subdivisions that'll take care of that. If somebody wants to have 32 cars, whether they're junk, whether you consider them a nuisance, or somebody else considers them a collector's item, that's their business. If I don't like what the neighbor does, we'll work out with the neighbors. You know, we've been to the point where we should be able to work with each other. We don't need a lot of people telling us what we can do and can't do on our own land. If I want to build a tax shed on my barn, well, I shouldn't be able to do that. You've got to take at least minimum of three days to get a building permit. Then it takes another, minimum of three days to get that permit approved, I mean, inspected. You don't have the manpower to do this to begin with, doing what you're doing now. You add all these regulations on them, how are you going to control that? Are you going to go on people's property to say, well, you can't have that, you know, that's illegal now? And you see, you've talked grandfathered in, but how are you going to control that? If I've got five cars on my site now that's grandfathered in, how do you want to bring another one in? How are you going to police this? That's a really big issue to me. So you got to be careful what we're doing, what we're making. More laws that we can't control, or we can't police. So I just hope you, like a lot of them, we should scrap about 90% of that in there and go from there. So, anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Terry Morrison, 1392, Casper. I do believe this is a huge overreach, and I know you've spent a ton of money paying for this. It's going to be hard to justify throwing it in the garbage. But I recommend that you start from zero. This overreach is ridiculous. This is Wyoming. I'm a third-generation Wyomingite. Believe me, I know it, inside, out, and backwards. And I don't see any reason for this at all. We're not Denver. We don't want to be Denver. I really want you to reconsider this, and I'd throw it in the trash. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
I really appreciate everything that you guys have done and tried to do for us. But you've heard the people, and I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Against her, your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Hank Bowers. I live on Eight Mile Road. I have a quick question, and that is, you said that you have access to the Wyoming Handbook for County Commissioners. Okay, and on pages 60 and 61, how come you haven't read it? Because you're an absolute violation, as that is printed. And your 45 days will start from wherever you made the revisions to the final draft. That part I know. But anyway, and there it gives a procedure which we can do to appeal, and that's any 25 people, which I think we have more than that here, or any group composed of 25 people can appeal, and it will go either to the state or the county, and will be represented by counsel, and then we'll have our appeal. So that I am all in favor of instituting that program. So we'll follow your rulebook when we do this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. There being no others to speak against the zoning rewrite, I now declare the public hearing closed. Well, there was nobody for... Discussion? Commissioner North.
Thank you, Chairman. I have, I still have some issues with the process that we've gone through. The biggest problem that I have is, I know that staff has been working as hard as they can to stay up with the changes and everything else. But I don't feel that the public has had an opportunity to read the final draft yet, especially since we were still working on it this afternoon. I do believe in transparency. I do believe that it's been 20 years since this was, came out, and the rewrite with that. And I would rather us take our time and make sure this is done right, so that it's something that we can live with, and so the people of Metro County can live with.
Let me make a Roberts Rules error here correction. The chair to entertain a motion to approve, and then if we want to table, we can do that. So...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
For purposes of discussion, I will move to adopt the amendment to the recommended planning and zoning resolution as set forth in the December 9, 2022, Commissioner working version, which includes the changes made today at our work session, and which also includes the appendices. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Nicolason, seconded by Commissioner Mill. Now discussion. Okay. Commissioner Nicolason.
And Commissioner North, now, if you want to go?
There's no need me saying it again. I think everybody heard me the first time.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the public, I thank you all for coming out tonight. We have been listening to you. I have been actually quite impressed with staff, and specifically Christie's work with a lot of members of the public in processing the comments submitted, and putting them in a matrix, and helping us understand what the public has been talking about. We've heard from a lot of people tonight. I think I've also heard from, and I know the Commissioners have heard from, a lot of other members in the public that aren't here tonight, but we've been hearing from them for the last four months. You know, we had a work session today, and I think that we actually didn't make hardly any changes. I think that, you know, with respect to one of the members of the public that mentioned difficulty with submitting a comment electronically, I was able to do that and got confirmation of my test tonight, and didn't have any issues submitting a comment. So, you know, I think we have been listening, and I don't think that it is appropriate for us to delay this further. I think that what's appropriate is for us to take this document and allow the county to move forward with it, and allow the county to, and future commissions, to make changes to it. I think that the people who have concerns that this document's confusing honestly haven't spent a lot of time with it. I think that it is organized quite well. I think that this is a balance between having a community we can be proud of and private property rights. And I think this document does a good job at doing that.
Thank you. Please, you've all had your chance to speak. Now, let the Commissioners, if you want to boo us when we make a decision, that's fine. Commissioner Mill?
Sure. Yeah, I also want to thank and recognize everybody that's come out, all the public comment that we received, not just from y'all, but from the people that were out there prior to, and that can't make it in for whatever reason. I do think staff has done an excellent job, not only the current staff with Chrissy, but the past staff as well. Want to recognize that there was a lot of contribution from the prior employees, as well as the steering committee, subcommittees, everybody that's worked on this, from the fire, to the mountain, to the whole thing. It's just been a long, arduous process for the last two years. I do, there's a few of you here, I really want to appreciate, let you know, I appreciate the comments, the public comments, of the meaningful comments that we were actually able to take and work from. Those really did help us. So with that said, I think right now, Metro County, in this point in time, we're at a unique point where we can't be like those six other counties. We're going to have to be like those 17 other counties. Between...
Please, please.
Casper Mountain, between RAM, industrial, urban residential, and commercial, the influx of population that's coming, sorry, the influx of population that's coming in, I think zoning is necessary. This is, like Commissioner Nicolason said, a very good, in my opinion, balance between private property rights and development. And unfortunately, zoning has been identified as a necessary, as a necessity by prior boards. We didn't come up with this. We're trying to rewrite it, make it better. What we have right now is not that. This isn't new. Most of this rewrite is just that, a rewrite. Most of this has already been, it's in place right now. We're all living under it right now. So what we're trying to do is have a positive effect for this community, for our community, and I believe this moves us forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendry.
You know, thanks to everybody for coming out, and the staff has worked long and hard on this, and taken lots of abuse. And like we are, that's part of the job. But, you know, we had questions today that there's got to be some control on growth. That was one comment I heard. And another one was, we don't want this to end up being like Park City. Another one was, we don't want this to be like Denver and the Front Range. I agree with those statements. You know, if you don't want it to look like the Front Range, you have to have rules. And those rules are zoning. And I wasn't all for it when I got here 16 years ago. But I understood, after being here, why it's there. And there was a question about, we just need a land use plan. Well, we have a land use plan. We just updated that not too long ago. I do worry a little bit about, how many people is it going to take to administer it all the way? And really, we don't do it all the way now. But, so I do worry a little bit about that. But there's a lot of people out there that if something goes wrong, if their neighbor does something that they don't like, the first thing they turn to is either the sheriff or the county and say, we need to do something about that. Well, that's zoning. So, anyway, the other thing is that there were some comments about, you're going after me. We're not going after anybody that's got anything existing out there right now. Whatever's out there right now is grandfathered in. I mean, if you have 20 cars out there, and they're not screened, and they haven't, I mean, if you've got them now, they're not part of this. They're going to be there. They're grandfathered in. Everything that's existing on the ground now is grandfathered in. It's from tonight on, anybody wants to come in and do a subdivision, or come in and do 40-acre tracts, whatever, they have to adhere to this new zoning rule. Not anything that's existing out there now. So that was my comment, Mr. Chairman.
My quick question for Mr. Nelson. So are you comfortable on the 45-day with the amendments we've made? Because my question is, if that were the case, if we made and had a complete document, made one amendment tonight, would we have to run the 45 days again?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think that's, Commissioner Nicolason's motion is very important. So the official document before you is the document that was recommended on a 3-2 vote by planning and zoning to pass. And so the document that contains basically the working draft, which contains the changes that you guys have incorporated over the past half dozen or 10 work sessions, is really just that, a working document. I think if we took the position that every time a change was made, then the 45-day clock started over, you'd be caught in this perpetual loop where you'd never get to a vote. So I do feel comfortable, especially the way the motion was made and seconded. I think that was our intent. The working draft was a way to try to take a very complex, complicated document and process, and make it as digestible as possible for the public. So I do feel confident that we've provided proper notice, and we're at a point where we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner North, do you have anything else to add?
No, not at this time.
So the question, what I've got from almost all of you is, you don't want any zoning. I understand that is your view. I understand that is your view, and I understand where it's coming from. But, but zoning does provide you both protection and benefits to the, and I'll give you an example. When I was on the city council, one of the, somebody came in and did a subdivision, and they wanted to put apartments right behind houses. Well, that was already zoned for housing. That protected those individuals from getting multi-unit dwellings immediately behind them. It's the same thing everywhere. We're not here trying to control the land, we're just trying to protect some of the property rights that are out there, that you, when you buy a piece of property, you know what the expectations are, not just for what you have, but everything around you, so that there is that protection from you. So that is the benefit of zoning, and I understand it also, you lose some protections in the course of that. So let me, I want to address a few things that were said. Money and power. You can't, this job's not worth the, the money that you get paid for it. Power, if you think this, we have power, we're strapped with the constitutional and state statutes that tell us what we can and can't do. And you're right, if we do something wrong, you take us to court. So we do everything that we can to stay within state statutes. Property taxes and zoning have very little in common. Believe it or not, they have really no symbiotic relationship, other than if you're in urban ag, that we're going to compare ag areas to you. But they don't, the zoning really doesn't have any effect on property taxes. The question about neighborhoods is, neighborhood is defined by the assessor, is a rather nebulous thing. It doesn't mean necessarily everybody immediately next, adjacent to you. It could, it could be somebody aways from you, and that's how the assessor does it. So it has really, zoning has no effect on that. We've done everything we can to, to take the confusing and conflicting stuff out of this, and I don't think we're ever going to write a document that anybody's going to say that we've got it perfect. Permits, I don't know if we have, we address permits in zoning to any significant degree. So that is usually done when you go to get a, get a permit to build. The six counties who don't have any zoning don't have a metropolitan area with a foothill and a mountain on top, and lakes and everything else around. I don't disagree that when you get farther out, maybe zoning doesn't even need to be there, or maybe what we have tried to do is keep that, those restrictions on that land as minimal as possible, because we recognize that's ag land. We don't want to get involved in that ag operation, but the closer you get to the metro area, the more chances you have for conflicts. And the zoning helps alleviate some of those where we can say, you just can't put that there because of its general location. Staff requirements and federal requirements. We did everything we could to strip out the staff requirements. A lot of the uproar initially was the vegetation management plan. We said, why is this in here? How much staff is this going to take? We stripped that out to a, from a shall to a should, to a shall. What, should. The recommendation, it's a recommendation, but not a mandatory. Federal requirements, you go through this document, we did everything we can to take out any reference to any federal, or in some cases, state requirements. We took out references towards, while, while grouse, wetlands as defined by the EPA or even DEQ, we left those on the DEQ's table. We said, we're trying to focus on just Nitrona County. We're not going to use their terminology. If there's a big enough project out there, it's going to go before the DEQ. They can put their stipulations on it. We didn't need to do that. So that's why I find it comforting, because that's one of the things we did in going through this. What was one of them, the Wetlands Mitigation Bank, something, that just got the big X. So there's a whole bunch of things we just simply said, that's not Nitrona County. It's interesting, Ms. Jones brought it up, that this crush, crushing side out here, she wants the EPA involved in it. So, okay, when do you want us to be in your life and when do you not want us to be in your life? So that, the government is a necessary evil in your life. We want to keep it as small as possible, but it's something we have to have. So I'm done with that. Is there any further discussion?
All right. Chair, be it no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes. At this point, we're done with the public, this, our official agenda, with entertaining comments from the public.
You have to have an approved application for grandfathering, just so everybody knows.
Mr. Hendry?
You don't.
This is why you were fired. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you all for coming out.
There was a question about that. Mr. Chairman, do you have to have a permit to grandfather something?
No.
No, sir.
You don't have to have a permit to be grandfathered.
There's, Mr. Chairman, there's no permit for grandfathering.
Here. Okay, thank you.
No, her, no, she's talking about her, the lady.
What, ma'am, are you going to talk on this, or you have something else?
Yes, I, my name's Carol Smith. I live at 12393 Henry Roadway.
We're going, we're going, we're going, we're going to take a couple of minutes and let them. Folks, folks, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind taking your conversation out in the hall? We still have people that'd like to address us?
I'd just like to know when we get to read this that you just passed tonight.
It, it, it is on the website.
All redacted is every, everything as you've passed it?
Mr. Chairman, so today's are not in there?
Okay.
But we can get that?
There's a, there's a few little ones in there that we actually, if anything, we just struck. Some of them are, the biggest one was home occupation stuff, and other than that, it was, that was about it. We made, we simplified some stuff.
It's under what topic in the website?
It's on the front page of the website, on the left-hand side in the teal box. It's the bottom link is the zoning rewrite link opens the page. You'll go down to the middle button is the commissioner's draft document, and we will get that updated as soon as possible with the reflections of motions tonight.
And that, that's date?
If you'll hit your.
The, the current that's listed right now is the 12, is the 12/9.
I'm disappointed that you would probably vote this in before we've been able to read it, even with your reductions making it simpler. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me where I go to find this?
Go to the Nitrona County website. And I'm trying to get, that gets you to the, the main page, and then, where's it at after that? So if you go to, go to that and click on the big Nitrona County, Wyoming, on the left, upper left-hand side, it will bring you to another page, and the zoning rewrite, zoning resolution rewrite is on, is listed on the tab on the left-hand side. Commissioner Mill?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, apology for jumping in on the public thing real quick. Chrissy, when, when it's put on to the, when the new draft, or the concise version is put on, will it, it won't be listed under 12/7, it'll be 12/20 then, or for the date?
So, so Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I was just talking with Ms. Turner, we'll have to get a clean copy of what was adopted. The chairman will have to sign off, so we have officially adopted copy. And then we'll discuss it, but I think then most of that stuff needs to be archived, and then it's just presented as the adopted 2022 zoning resolution.
And then the current, it could actually fit under the current zoning.
Probably.
It would be the current zoning.
It would be, right. So I think we'll simplify that, so there's no confusion, that it'll be very easily accessible, and I think it'll probably take us a day or so to get that, that sorted out.
And it won't, it won't be, it'll probably reference the, just, it won't be draft, it won't be redlined, it'll just be the new draft. Is that?
It, no, it'll be the.
I mean, the new zoning, yes. So it, it won't be near as confusing with the red and the blue and the whatnot on it. Okay. Anyone else? All right, there ain't no one else. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for a really nice eight months or so. Your leadership has been great, and I've learned a ton. You've been a real valuable asset to the county and to the, the offices and staff, and you've got a wealth of experience, and you've got a great way with people, and you've got big shoes, there are going to be big shoes to fill. So thank you. And Chairman Hendry, you, you're, you've even got more experience helping to manage the county, and I've learned a lot from you, and I don't know what the future holds for both of you, but I wish you both the best, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner North?
I just want to reiterate that. It's been, it's been fun working with both of you two the last two years, and it's broadened my horizon quite a bit, and, you know, and both of you have given a lot of service to the county, and Paul also to the city, and we do appreciate that, and I hope you both enjoy being recovering politicians.
Commissioner, which one do you want to go next? Commissioner Mill?
What, is he going to say goodbye to himself? Okay, this sucks. Chairman Bertollio, Commissioner Hendry, I want to thank you for your years of service to this community, to the county. Over the past few years, coming on, it was interesting, chewed on you a little bit for the election, for the campaign, but it was good. It was friendly. But over those years, I've gotten to know you both. I've developed a great deal of respect for both of you. I may have disagreed occasionally with something, but you guys, I know the efforts and everything you've done has, it's always been for the benefit of the community, for the county. And, and I really, really respect that. The knowledge and the expertise that is walking out these doors tonight, it's, it's going to be sorely missed. I, I'm not sure how we're going to do it, but we'll, we'll manage. It'll be ugly, but we'll manage. But it's been an honor working with you both. And I'd like to think, not just as coworkers, but that we've become friends. So this parting is bittersweet. I hope future boards will be able to find the similar dynamics that we had. It's, it's, you know, you guys have made this such a pleasure to be with, be on this board, truly was. So I'd say, don't let the door hit you in the ass somewhere out. But go ahead and enjoy your PIP status.
Yeah, all right. Commissioner Hendry?
Well, thank you, and, you know, it has been a while, 16 years, and I've, I've really enjoyed it. I mean, it, you know, we get eat on tonight, and that's fine, that's, that's why we're in the seats, and we need to hear from the people out there, and we need to, we need to hear their voices. I would say that, that, you know, the 150 people, 100 people we had in here tonight, that's the ones that were, were concerned about it, but there's, there's 20,000 out there that didn't show up tonight. And we had comments, this has been on the website for a long time, so, anyway, I, these are tough nights, but that's why we are sitting in these chairs, and, but I've had a real good time. I've enjoyed being here. You know, when I started out, there was two meetings a week in here, and we were meddling in people's lives a lot, and we don't do that anymore, and I appreciate that. But I, I really like all the friends that I've had in the commission, and got to know you guys, and thanks for your comments. But I'm going to miss the people in the courthouse. You know, I've got a lot of friends in the courthouse, and I'm going to miss that, I'm going to miss the people. And I'll be around, hell, I'll come back in once in a while, but my truck, my truck's going to be in the garage, and it's not going to know that we're not, why, why aren't we going to town today? But I've really enjoyed it, and my wife and son, you know, I'm going to go out and bug them probably a little more, and I've already heard once or twice, don't you have a meeting to go to? So I'm going to be bugging them a little more, but we're going to travel and run around and, and have some fun, and, you know, this commission, I appreciate this commission, and we've got along awful good, and, and I appreciate that. If you have a commission that frays and you're not together, even though, yeah, we've disagreed on things, but that's, that's normal, that's, that's the course of life. But at the end, we're a commission, and I hope, I really hope, Nitrona County doesn't lose that. You've got to have, even if you don't agree on everything, you've got to be together, because you five run the county. And, and so lots of luck, and I'm sure to enjoyed it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I've absolutely enjoyed being a county commissioner. As I, I've been chastised by my commissioner friends across the state forever mentioning I was a city council member. In, as I like to refer to it, now the lower house of local governments, having to get to serve in the upper house, has been a real honor and privilege, and especially to serve all the citizens in Nitrona County. Not every decision we make, everyone even comes close to liking, but that's why we were elected to, to make.
were elected to, to make decisions, and sometimes they're not very popular. We have, over the past years I've been on with Commissioner Hendry and Commissioner, or, represented-elect Forrest back there, we, we've, we've accomplished a lot in the past five years. We went through a pandemic together. We never shut the courthouse down, continue to provide those services to our citizens. We sold a hospital. We're trying to get a new county health building built, a new library. We've done some pretty major things. And the reason we've been successful is, this board has worked so well together. And, but really, we couldn't do it without our staff. And over the years, we've made some significant changes to how we staff. We brought Daniel Krucheck in, to our first human resources person. And what she's been able to provide to us, as well as all the departments and electeds, is something that the county hasn't ever had, and that's professional human resource person. She's helped us provide probably the biggest change in how we pay our employees that's probably ever been put in place. We've got a very talented attorney that is leaving us, but I've absolutely learned so much from Eric Nelson. What he's given to the county has been just phenomenal. As we had a little, our work session earlier, we talked about having a city administrator, or a county administrator. And Eric has done pretty much that. He's also been our finance guy, legal guy. What he's provided us in guidance has been just invaluable. We've got some fabulous elected officials, Tracy, including you, I know. But the one that helps the commissions, every commission I've worked with, and we couldn't do without, is Michelle Mainz. Every, behind every successful board, there's a, there's a person that keeps us on track, and that is Michelle Mainz, so. And with that, we're, all right. Oh, I get to present this to Rob.
Well, thank you, Rob. I've enjoyed working with you. I don't know what you got there.
I got a big hammer.
Yeah, that's a mother. Mr. Chairman? Yes, thank you. Thank you for your service. You're right.
And with that, we're adjourned. I got to go see my little grandson back there, he's the one making all the noise.